Good evening. Welcome to the special meeting of the Florence City Council. If you please stand. We pray for the wisdom to make decisions that are beneficial to the people represented here, and powers to speak honestly, reflect wisely, and vote with integrity. We seek your guidance tonight. Amen.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Philippines, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go call, please. Ms. Wingo?
Here.
Ms. Chambers?
Here.
Mr. Nguyen?
Here.
Ms. Snyder?
Here.
Ms. Cable?
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum. We do have, for your consideration, the minutes of the business meeting of August 12th, 2025. Is there any discussion? Ms. Whalen?
Second.
Second by Mr. Snyder. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we do have a presentation from Teresa Cruz. If you could come to the podium. And Teresa is the president and CEO of Fiesta of Northern Kentucky, and they do a lot of valuable work in our community. So welcome, Teresa.
Hi, good evening. Good to see everyone. So as she said, I'm Teresa Cruz. I'm the founder and CEO of Fiesta. Fiesta stands for Families, Inclusion, Education, Society, Tradition, and Access. And we're a small nonprofit, grassroots nonprofit organization that serves the Hispanic community of Northern Kentucky. We officially opened our doors January 3rd of 2024, and we are in Florence, so we are serving the people in your backyard, which is great. Our mission is to support self-sufficiency, build capacity, uplift and advance the Hispanic community of Northern Kentucky. And if you look at Florence, you've noticed that the Hispanic community has grown exponentially in the last five years. Oh, it worked. Yeah. Okay. We have three initiatives. When I first started this, we had so many things that we wanted to do, but we dwindled it down to three really, really important initiatives. Our first one is food, second is resource coordination, and the third is education and outreach. We are the only culturally relevant food pantry in Northern Kentucky. And what that means is that we provide food that our families recognize and that they know how to cook. They go to other food pantries, and they don't know what to do with the canned food. They don't eat mac and cheese. They don't eat Spaghettios. They don't eat peanut butter and jelly. So we provide food that they, is relevant to them, they know how to cook it, and it won't go to waste. That's another thing. We want to make sure that none of the food goes to waste. We have an emergency food pantry, so when families are new to the area and they come in, they have nothing, we can prepare a nice tote bag filled with rice, beans, lentils, maseca flour, protein for them to get them started until they come to our end-of-the-month food distribution event. So the goal is to ensure that no one in our community goes hungry. But we also do resource coordination. And that just means that we connect anyone that comes into our office to whatever need they may have. Sometimes they come in and they say, "I need help." "Okay, how can we help you?" They don't know what they need. "Okay, let's back it up. Let's see, what do you need? Do you have a place to live? Do you have food? Do you have a job?" And then you start digging in deep about what their needs are. And a lot of times, it's something simple. "Let me make a phone call. Let me get that for you. Let me fill out this paperwork for St. Vincent de Paul to help you get rental assistance." Or, "Let me help you fill out lie heap forms" that are all in English to help you get this assistance. So we really want to make sure that everyone has access to the support that they need. And the last one is education and outreach. And that one encompasses a lot more. We have been blessed to partner with Gateway, and we're offering ESL classes, and we offer workshops on different topics to support family well-being. We also have health fairs. We have job fairs, resource fairs, and cultural community events. One of the big things that I think is important is that as we see needs come up, we've been able to meet those needs. So workforce, we surveyed 144 of our clients and asked them what was the biggest barrier to employment. And they said that it was language. So what was our next step? Get in touch with Gateway. September 3rd, we start ESL classes at Fiesta. So we're trying to meet the needs as they come up. Another one was food. Okay, let's get you food that you recognize. We surveyed the different families that we see. In Florence alone, you have from Venezuela, from Guatemala, from Mexico, from, I'm Puerto Rican, there aren't too many of us around. But we surveyed them to see what they eat, so that we could provide food that they could recognize. Another part of education, workforce development. Under that, we were able to secure eight jobs last month for people at L'Oréal. So we're trying to build connections to companies, so that when we do have people that we know are good, hard-working people, we can make those connections. And people can have a livable wage. What else? Oh, mental health. We also have a mental health initiative that we're starting in September. So we're really trying to meet the needs as we see them come up. The key milestones, we've been open since January 3rd, 2024, our first year. We served 1,197 families through our monthly Latino food distribution. 1,438 people were impacted through our outreach events. One of our outreach events was a community resource fair. We had 371 people show up to get connected to resources. 1,170 people connected to resources. Last year, we connected 133 people. We sent them to Gateway for ESL classes last year. And then, when you add all that up, it's 3,805 are the number of people served in 2024. Our food distribution event last year, at this time, we were at 65 families. Right now, we've had to cap it. We're at 210 families a month that we're serving. So the numbers are going to be a lot bigger this time. So how you can help? There are a lot of ways you can support. You can donate. You can volunteer. We do have volunteer opportunities. But I would really love for you to help me to get the word out about our first fundraiser ever, Fiesta at the Plate. So we have partnered with the Florence Yalls Stadium. They have, we rented out the entire stadium, really excited. Every ticket that is purchased, the tickets are only 40 bucks, and every ticket that's purchased goes right back to serving the families. It is Friday, September 19th, 2025. We have food from five different Latino countries: Cuba, Venezuela, Mexico, Guatemala, and Puerto Rico. We're going to have a live salsa band, a DJ, what else? A batting competition. The Florence Yalls players are going to be there. And we also have a salsa competition. So I'm really excited. We wanted to make something fun. We wanted to step away from galas. Everyone is doing a gala or a golf tournament, and I do neither, so we wanted to do something fun for the community. We really want to show our support for the Latino community that's here in Northern Kentucky. We're in your backyard. We're not going anywhere. So I would really love for Florence to be a really, to be the hub, just the way we're the hub for the Hispanic community. I would love for Florence, for people to see Florence as that also, to be a welcoming space where they feel valued and respected, and where they can say, "Oh, you should come live in Florence," because it's a really great place to be. So I love that my space is in Florence. We're on 42. We are in the perfect spot. We've outgrown our space twice, but I don't want to move just because we're in the perfect spot. And it's, they know us in the community, and I'm really excited to be in Florence. I wouldn't want to move. They've invited me to move to St. Vincent de Paul in Erlanger, and I said no, because I really love Florence. So, thank you very much. That's what we do, and I'm really excited to be here tonight. Thank you very much.
Anyone on council have any questions?
Any questions for me?
Can I ask?
Ms. Whalen?
You say you're on 42.
Yes.
If you can tell us where and how people can contact you?
Absolutely. So do you know where Mai Tai is? Okay. If you're going towards Erlanger, Mai Tai is on your left. Just before you hit Heritage Bank, there's a building with a really ugly green awning. That's where we are. You won't miss it. If you look for the ugly green awning, we're on the bottom floor there.
And what is the address?
The address, 7536 US Highway 42. We're in Suite, Suite 8. And you can look us up online, fiestankey.org. And that way, you can see a little bit more about our services and the events that are coming up. And any other questions about what we do?
Leslie?
Can you tell us about, once the families are helped, how they are giving back?
Absolutely. That's a huge part. So glad you asked that. So I can say, 75% of the families that we serve, 75% of our volunteers are families that we serve. We've made it a cycle of giving. So I have no problem asking families to help out. Now that you're doing well, great. Now you can come help us pack boxes. And I think we're a grateful community to begin with. The Latinos are very grateful people to begin with. But also, giving them that push that says, "Hey, we helped you." I want to make sure that you help someone else, right? That building, that building capacity. I want to make sure that they're helping. By helping us, you're helping another family get food. So I can say that 75% of our volunteers are families. I have two volunteers. One does my bookkeeping. She was an accountant in Venezuela. I suck at bookkeeping. I am horrible. So she does our bookkeeping for free. She's our volunteer. And we have two other volunteers that do our data entry for us. And these are people that, that's how they're giving back. And they're really helping us, because it's stuff that I can't do.
Thank you.
And then every month, you have a, the big volunteer event that you'd have is the last Friday of the month?
The last Friday of the month is our food distribution event. And we start shopping, so that'll be next week. By Monday, I start shopping. Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, we have volunteers come in to unload the trucks of food that come. And then Friday, all day, from noon to about 8:30 at night, is packing boxes and distributing food. We also made a commitment with Turfway, the racetrack. And we, right now, we can only do 25. We have really big tote bags, and we take 25 tote bags of non-perishable food items to the gentlemen that work at the racetrack.
Very good. Anyone else? Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Really appreciate your impact in the community. Thank you. Next, we have discussion of electric franchise agreements within the city of Florence. Mr. Hunt, please.
Okay. If I could turn your attention to the screen, I do have a quick PowerPoint presentation I'll be going through. Let's see here. First thing is while franchise agreements, they seem like a really complicated issue, they're actually pretty straightforward. So just the first step with this is, what is a franchise agreement? A franchise agreement is basically a contract between a city and a utility provider, and it allows that utility provider to operate within the city's right-of-way. And I have a map of what a right-of-way is, and I'll show you that in a second. The specific franchise agreement that we're talking about tonight will define the relationship between the city and Duke Energy and Owen Electric. It's a non-exclusive franchise, and what that means is that anybody, if you're an electric utility provider, you can bid on it. But within our municipal district, we do have two service providers, Duke and Owen. Both of them have said that they are interested in bidding the franchise agreement. So a quick summary, a franchise agreement grants the utility permission to utilize the right-of-way. It sets rules of how they have to operate within the right-of-way. It ensures that the, and this is a big one, ensures that they restore any kind of sidewalks or streets that they tear out when they're doing new installs or doing any kind of repairs to the utility. They define the length of the term. In the case of this one, it is a 20-year term that we're talking about. And most franchise agreements have something called franchise fees, which we'll talk a little bit about in a second. And it provides legal framework between both parties, both the city and then the person that is responding to it. So probably the best way to explain it, and I don't know how well you can see it on this screen, some people get confused when we say right-of-way. What is a right-of-way? So right-of-way is a cross-section of street that the city owns and maintains. So you can see, this is Hollywood Drive. The green lines on each side are indicative of property ownership. So this is a parcel that goes this way. This is a parcel that goes this way. Everything in between here is a right-of-way that the city of Florence owns and maintains. Right-of-ways are not one and the same. They, you know, this one is 50 feet. We've got some that are 65 feet, 70 feet. We have some that are 35 feet. It really just depends on when the street was plotted, what the right-of-way being proposed, you know, that, that, whatever the size it was on the plot, is what the city was willing to accept, and that's why we accepted it. So as you can see on this map, Duke Energy, the purple line is indicative of overhead utility lines. So they're taking up this side of the right-of-way. And then over here, you have a dashed blue line that you can't really see, but that was an old water main. So the chances are, that was a six-inch cast iron water main that was installed in the 60s or 70s. Over here in the street, you have a solid blue line that goes up and down, and that is a new water utility that was replaced probably within the last few years, and it's probably a C900 DR14 eight-inch water main. And the reason I bring that up is even though there is sometimes large right-of-ways, it's, it gets crammed, especially when it comes time to do replacements or work within that right-of-way. It could be, we're trying to do a sidewalk project, or what we run into all the time is that when it's time to replace a water main, you cannot replace a water main in the same trench. In an ideal world, you would skip over to where the electric line is, if there was no other utilities in your right-of-way, and you would put the water main down it. Can't do that, because typically, there's a fiber, electric, or gas line on the other side of the road. So what we have been doing is putting the water main down the center of the street, which is very costly add-on for the city when we're doing any kind of new improvements. And that kind of leads me to really the last point of this, and that is franchise fees. So as noted in my memo, the franchise agreement reserves a right for the city to, city council to impose a franchise fee of up to 5% at some point within the next 20 years, or not at all. There's no language in there that says you have to take the 5%. It's just reserve the right to do that. Council has made it abundantly clear that there is no desire to impose a franchise fee at this point, right now, or any time in the future. If, say, 15 years down the road, new council comes in, they want to impose a franchise fee, they would have to do that in this setting. It would be a public discussion, and then they would have to vote on it. The reason many cities impose franchise fees is to help offset the cost of construction, and kind of some of the stuff that we just talked about. You know, putting a water line underneath the street, that increases that capital project by about 20%, because you have to use flowable fill, you have to bring it up, replacing all kinds of concrete pavement. So it costs more for a city to do necessary work within the right-of-way that we own. I did provide council with some rough numbers of what a 3% and/or 5% fee would generate, but once again, I know that there is no desire to implement a fee. So lastly, and really what this is all about, is what is being asked of you is that you pass an ordinance that authorizes the city to bid. So basically, you're passing the bid that will be advertised, that these electric companies will be, respond back to. We'll do the bid. Duke and Owen will reply back. We'll review those to make sure that they're in line with compliance of the standards we put forth in the bid documentation. And from there, it comes back to council. You'll review the franchise agreements that were submitted, and then you will pass a resolution if you're in line or on board with what was submitted back to the city.
And just to make sure clear, that they weren't provided with the ordinance just yet, because Lene is working on that.
Correct.
So we will get that to you.
Correct.
Prior to any
Yeah.
further discussion. So, anybody else have any other discussion?
May I?
Yes, Ms. Whalen?
So Duke is in our right-of-way now.
Uh huh.
Owen Electric is here.
Uh huh.
What does this actually do, other than put this out to bid and open a door for sometime in the next 20 years to impose a franchise?
Sure. It, if you're operating a utility within a right-of-way, you really need to have some sort of legal documentation saying you have rights to that right-of-way. They have, just like the city does, we're a utility provider. And I could tell you, the issue I ran into when I worked in public services years ago was developers were really bad about putting easements on sewer and storm pipes in the 70s. And you run into all kinds of issues. Fortunately, we have something called proprietary rights, where we're allowed to go in there and maintain those in certain situations. But what it does is it can get everybody in trouble if they're trying to do something within our right-of-way that technically they have no legal authority to do, because they have not entered into an agreement, a contract with the city.
And I guess the other thing is, when you talk about the water mains going in, it's been the philosophy of the city and the practice of the city to replace the water mains on streets when the street is due to be upgraded or repaired. So it's not necessarily more costly, because we'd be doing it anyway, somewhere.
Well, it's costly because you have to use flowable fill, as if you're on the backside of the curb. You have different standards in which you have to bring up that, the bedding on there for compaction purposes. So there is increased cost of doing it in the street.
So do you see the city public services department changing their philosophy about only doing water lines when they repair streets? I mean, Eric's not here to ask.
Yeah, I mean, you know, well, I was over that. I can tell you, when I was over that department years ago, there were situations where Grand Avenue is a perfect example. We replaced the street, then the water main started to explode, and then we had to go in and put the water main underneath the street that was five, six years old. So that was definitely an incurred cost.
The new water main exploded under the street?
No, no. So we replaced the street, and then the water main, which was on the backside of the curb, started exploding. And we had to go in and replace the main, and we ended up having to put it underneath the street that was five, six years old. So we've had it both ways. And it could be the same thing with a, you know, we're using water main as an example. It could be the same thing with a sidewalk project. If you go to a lot of these subdivisions that were constructed in the 70s, sidewalks, a lot of time were afterthought. It gets really difficult when you're trying to finagle sidewalks through some of these subdivisions because of the utilities that are sitting within the right-of-way. So there is increased cost in those scenarios as well.
Mr. Hunt, I want to make sure I clearly understand. So what you're saying is, if there's already some existing abandoned pipes, then we might have to go on the street. It doesn't mean that we're going under the street every time.
I would say we're pretty much half, we're being forced to go in the street just about every time. Now, I'm not in the loop on the last four or five years of water projects like I was back in the day. But there's not a lot of room in a lot of these right-of-ways. You're going underneath the street.
But you're also projecting this out for a certain amount, like a long period of time, so there could be a theoretical chance that even the ones that aren't in the street now might have to get in the street because Duke, Duke or Owen are occupying part of the right-of-way. Is that what I'm hearing?
The right-of-ways get full, and you really have no choice but to get into the street or come up, or get easements. Sometimes you can get easements on the backside of the right-of-way. You know, it just complicates the project.
But water mains already exist.
They do.
So water mains already exist. If you're replacing an existing water main, would that be an issue with an easement or a right-of-way?
Well, you have to leave, what makes it an issue is you have to leave the water main in service at all times. You can't shut it down and try to put it in the same trench or put it within close proximity to one another. You have to maintain positive flow to that service of that house with limited disruptions while you're installing it. So you're almost building two live sewer lines, or water lines simultaneously, supercorinating, and then switching it over.
They used to use firehose to provide water service to the houses when they were replacing water mains.
They did that when we went through a structural relining phase. We had six-inch cast iron lines that they tried to clean and do a relining on, but they were not structural relining. Ended up being a disaster. It made them cleaner, but it didn't really help the structural ability of it. So we went away from that practice altogether.
Mr. Hunt, I just want to make sure I understand too. We're spending a lot of time on water lines, but this agreement is more than just about the water lines. It's also about, like, sometimes there's agreements in there, from draft agreements, that I've seen that, I guess we don't have the final, but about maintaining vegetation. So we just need to spell out all the legal, not just the water lines, but you need to spell out everything legally with
Maybe the water lines are
operate in our right-of-way.
Not the best example. They're one that's near and dear to my heart, because I dealt with so many of them back in the day. Tree canopy was another big point. When we started discussing this, I met with the public services department and said, "Okay, guys, we have the opportunity. What do you want to see in here?" And they said, "Let's talk about tree maintenance and tree canopy, and at least have a Duke Energy or Owen Electric come in and have a conversation with us before they come in and start chopping down all the trees that are, you know, in front of the right-of-way, or within the right-of-way." We've had some issues, certainly had a lot of residential complaints over the years in certain areas as it relates to that. And they've agreed to do that in this franchise agreement, or at least it's written in to the franchise agreement. We'll see what the responses are.
So the goal would be to not have them come in and decimate the trees by chopping off one side off the lines and leaving the rest of it looking like death?
Yes, ma'am. Edward Scissorhands.
That's the intent. Of course, if they come in and do it anyway, then, you know, forgiveness instead of permission, I suppose.
We've certainly been down that road as well.
We have no agreement, then we have no recourse.
We have no recourse once they chop them down.
Yeah, right.
Any other questions?
Ms. Wingo?
I just wanted to comment that we do have franchise agreements, other franchise agreements.
Yes, we do.
This isn't something that we, is new to us. What other ones do we have?
We have a lot of cable ones. And I wish, I wish I was smart enough to tell the story about the cable franchise lawsuit that Mr. Ski's head up for 15 years, and we ultimately won through the Supreme Court, but I will butcher it if I try to tell. But we certainly have a lot of franchise agreements with cable companies. And there's a lot of fiber companies that come in here that sell, it's a big business, I guess. So there's data centers throughout Northern Kentucky, and they run these superhighway lines, just those lines, and they have to get a franchise agreement from the city to run those lines, because they're within our right-of-way.
Random cell tower?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. That. And then gas. Our gas one is not expired. Duke Energy is currently expired. So Duke and Owen are expired. Our gas one expires in 2032, I believe. The other problem I have with these franchise agreements is that these fiber companies sell all the time. So when they sell, we have to update the franchise agreement, and it's a big, it's a mess when you have to deal with that.
Any other discussion? All right.
One thing. So just to clarify, so if we charge these franchise fees to the energy company, is it typical for the energy company to then pass those, those costs on to the consumer whenever they get their bills?
That's a great question, Leslie. There is some cities that believe that electric companies should not pass it on, because it's a cost of doing business. And that is an argument that's been made. But I can never look you in the eye and say, what really happens is they 100% pass them on because the Public Service Commission allows them to do so. So these fees do get passed on every time to the user. But there is an outside argument that is currently making its way through some court cases with a local city around here, and that is a point that they have, that who are they to charge that fee?
And I believe that the ordinance would have reserved the right, but not a requirement.
Correct. Yeah. We go through this whole 20 years, and the fee never get imposed.
Any other discussion? All right. Thank you. Next, we have discussion on possible action, a resolution R5, 2025. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement between the Kenton County Fiscal Court and the city of Florence, Kentucky, for the purpose of providing senior services. Is there a motion to approve?
Summer?
Ms. Wingo?
You want me to paint some clarification on this?
Sure.
I'll do my best. Okay. So here is what I was able to dig up. So part of the Ski Senior Center, when it was constructed, was developed with Community Development Block Grants, which is a federal grant that is issued by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Pat, I think you actually spearheaded this in 2009. So part of caveat of receiving that money to build that requires that the senior center is basically open to all individuals. Doesn't, you can't, it doesn't matter about residency requirements, because it was funded with that, they have to be allowed to come there. The city contracts with YMCA to do the general oversight day-to-day operations of the Y, and we fund a pretty good portion of that management contract, but there are some other sources to how that is funded. So the Northern Kentucky Area Development District funds about $40,000 annually. Each year, I think this is where some of the confusion came in. Each year, the Y submits a request. It's one request, but it goes to three different counties, Boone, Kenton, and Campbell, seeking money for the programming and operation at the Y. Every year, the
Of the senior center?
I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry. Every year, Boone County is giving money to the YMCA, to the senior center. So there has been a contract with that every year. Kenton County, this is the first time that they've received or sent funds or committed to sending funds. So that is what the agreement is. So technically, it's not resigning or extending an agreement with Kenton County. It is a first-time agreement with them. And I think we're all appreciative of the fact that they are contributing. They do have about 135 unique visitors to our senior center every year. And I think that is largely in part because we have a super-nice senior center with really great programming. And that's what I was able to dig up on it.
Mr. Hunt, mayor, I spoke with the executive director for the Y that manages the program, and she informed me that the, last week, there was a question about the Erlanger Elsmere Senior Center. Senior Center. And the senior center, the Erlanger Elsmere Senior Center, was not offering as good of senior programs as Florence was, so a lot of those seniors came to Florence because apparently Florence has set the gold standard for senior centers in this area. So they came here, and it has just been recently that there have been enough people from seniors coming from the Erlanger Elsmere area at Kenton County in particular, that could require or at least command a payment from, contribution from the Fiscal Court of Kenton County. And although the Erlanger Elsmere Senior Center did not close, it is now just considered a general community center, so.
Any other discussion?
If we see increased numbers from Kenton County, this is based on a specific number of Kenton County residents? Is that something that I guess they will evaluate year to year on whether they are willing to look at contributing more based on their unique number?
Yes.
Yes.
They, they keep records for every year, and this was the first year, or I guess it was last year, was the first time that the numbers warranted a contribution, so.